Okay, so today we'll be solving the May-June 2023 Paper 2-2. For the first part of these sessions for physics that I will be holding, we're gonna do Paper 2 first. So if you cannot see if there's any trouble for you in seeing the picture, please open the paper in your home tab.
Wait, I'll upload the paper.
Alright.
Yeah, you can go ahead.
Okay. So for the first question, we can see it's a question regarding adding vectors. So it says forces of 3 Newton and 4 Newton act at right angles as shown. What is the resultant force? Alright, so the easiest way to do this question is the head-to-tail rule in which we can make the 3 Newton force upward and we can make it perpendicular to the 4 Newton force like this. And now we can just use the head-to-tail rule to draw the resultant, which will be in this direction, thus making it in the direction of O-Y. And now to find the resultant, the magnitude, we can use the Pythagoras theorem in which the final answer will be 3 squared plus 4 squared, square root. And the final answer will be 5 Newton along X, sorry. It will be 5 Newton along O-Y. Is everyone clear?
Yes, you can move on.
Just drop a message in the chat or raise your hands. Okay, so why are we squaring it? We're squaring it because of the Pythagoras theorem, which says B squared plus B squared is equal to A squared. So when we're going to equate it to A squared, to make H the subject, we're going to take the square root on the other side of the equation. Yep, alright. So let's move on to the next question. A light ball is held at the rest at the top of the tall cliff. It is released and falls through the air, eventually reaching its terminal velocity. Which row describes the behavior of the ball as it descends? Alright, so now for this answer, for this question, I know I was there. So like there was a lot of confusion why the answer isn't B, instead the answer is C. So here what we have to look at is that they're talking about when the ball is released and falls through the air. Okay, so the answer will be G because the initial acceleration as it is dropped will be equal to the gravitational pull that it is experiencing. But at the end, the final acceleration of the ball, they're talking when the terminal velocity is reached. So at that point, the final acceleration will be zero. So for this case, the answer will be C.
Yeah, to add on more information, as you know, a time passes, the added resistance gradually increases, which equals the thing. That's why it becomes zero. And when the acceleration is zero, it travels at, you know, constant speed. Hence it's C.
Alright, let me just tell you again, Nevi, why it isn't B? Because B says that the acceleration at the end, when it has reached terminal velocity, is going to be G. But that's not possible because at terminal velocity, the acceleration will be zero because it will be traveling at constant speed. Because the downward acceleration is equal to the upward. Let's say in easier words, according to forces can be a resistance is equal to the weight. Let me know if that's clear. Alright, great. Okay, the graph represents the motion of a car. How far has the car moved between 0 and 5 seconds? Alright, this is a very simple question. Speed and time graph, so the area under the graph is equal to the distance traveled. So in this case, we can see it's a triangle. So we'll consider it half into base into height. 1 by 2 into base into height. And in that case, that will be 50 divided by 2. Because our base is 5 and our height is 10 and we'll be dividing that by 2, so the answer is going to be C. Check in the chat if there is any confusion. Alright. Okay, then the next question we have. Which statement about mass or weight is not correct? Masses can be compared using a balance, that's correct. Mass is a force. Now this statement is not correct. All forces, the easiest way to remember this is all forces are measured in Newtons and mass is measured in cages. Alright, let's just see the rest of the statements to clear why they aren't true either. Why they are true? Ways can be compared using a balance, yes, that's true, and weight is a force.
Yeah, and what? Okay.
Yep, alright, I think this one is clear.
Also to add on another small info, mass is just the amount of matter in a substance, hence like it's always constant and it doesn't change. But weight can change because it's a force.
Alright, now we have question number 5. A sphere P made of steel has a weight of 10 Newton on Earth. Another sphere Q also made of steel has a weight of 10 Newton on Mars. The gravitational field strength on Earth is greater than the gravitational field strength on Mars. Which statement is correct? Alright, to explain this question, it isn't really easy. So a very easier way would be to assume the values of G on Earth as well as on Mars. Alright, so let's assume it that we know that the value of G on Earth is around 10. Although in the questions, it is now considered 9.8, but let's consider 10 for just estimate. And it says that the gravitational field strength on Earth is greater than Mars. So we can consider on Earth, it is 10. So let's consider Mars to be, for example, 5. We're not going to take any real values here, we're just gonna take, consider it examples. Okay, so it's saying the mass of sphere P is the same as the mass of sphere Q. This is definitely wrong. On Mars, the weight of sphere P is the same as the weight of sphere Q. No, mass is dependent, sorry, weight is dependent on mass, so this can be true either. On Earth, the weight of sphere Q is less than 10 Newton. No, that's wrong as well. Because if the strength, if the gravitational field strength is greater, then the weight won't be less than 10 Newton. So our final answer is gonna be B.
Okay. Is everyone clear? Okay, someone wants you to explain it again.
Alright, so let's take an example, alright, we consider these values, right? So let's say we want to find the mass, the weight. So W is equal to m into G. So if we're taking, let's say on Earth, on Earth, P has a weight of 10 Newton. 10 is equal to m times 10, right? Because we're taking the G value to be 10. So 10 divided by 10 is 1 kg. Is equal to mass. So we're going to assume that the mass of sphere P is 1 kg. And let's say, let's do the same method for sphere Q. The sphere Q has a weight of 10 Newton on Mars. So 10 Newton is equal to m times 5. And if we do that, 5, 10 divided by 5, we get 2 kg's. Is equal to mass. So we can say that the mass of sphere P is less than the mass of sphere Q.
Yep, it's because they say that the gravitational field strength on Earth is higher, though the weight is the same. So on one side, if it's higher, though both are the same in the weight, then obviously one's mass should be less than the other. If not, then there wouldn't be the same weight.
Yes, and I've already said that, that the actual value that will be considered in the exam is 9.8. We're just considering that as a estimate, so we don't have to work in decimals because we don't like them. Alright, wish to, question number 6. Which two quantities must be known to determine the density of a material? Alright, we know the formula for density. Density is equal to mass per unit volume. So the information we need to know is mass and volume. That's simple enough. I don't think there's gonna be any problem, but let's see. Alright, I don't think there's any problem here.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Question number 7. A truck is towing a car along a straight horizontal road at a constant speed. The rope breaks. Which rope gives the direction of the initial acceleration of the truck after the rope breaks and the reason for the acceleration? Okay, the best way to solve these types of question is to imagine it in real time. So first, let us determine the direction. The direction, if you see it, is going to be easily, you can tell it's gonna be the right side because that's the way the driving force is exerting the force, right? So it's gonna be the right side and the reason is that the driving force is greater than the resistive forces on the truck. So it's gonna be C? Just checking for any questions? Nope, I don't think so.
No, yeah.
Alright. Question number 8. A uniform beam is pivoted at the center and 2 identical masses, X and Y, are placed so that the beams balance. A smaller mass is then added at the position shown. How can the masses be positioned so the beam balances again? Okay, so to do this question, the most simplest way is holding a pen and placing it on your finger, at the edge of your finger. And then there are now imaginary weights that are acting at both ends, right? And now try pressing each side and try moving your finger along each side. And then you'll be able to see what the answer is. And in this case, the answer will be B. Because if you notice, if we move X away from the pivot, it's going to make it move in this direction. And already the addition of the position of the small mass is making it go into this direction. So if we do that, it will be just helping it. But if we move X over here, it will be supporting this side of the moment. So for this, the answer is gonna be B.
Okay, so let me just add on once again this one. So it's basically force into distance. Hence, it can be 2 answers for this. Either you have to move X towards the pivot, hence the force is less and it balances out with Y. Or we can move Y away from the pivot, which will also increase the force. But because that option is not given here, it's, the answer should be B here. Uh, yeah. It's basically force and, okay, fine. Uh, to, okay, fine. To give another example, let's take a door. In a door, the pivot is at the extreme left or right, on one side, on end of one side. And then, and the knob of the door is always at the end of the other side. This is because it'll be, it's placed far apart from the pivot, hence it'll be easier for us to open the door. For example, let's say the knob of the door was closer to the pivot, then we would have to apply more force to open the door. So hence that proves that forces, I mean, the distances also there. Hence it should be. Yeah, yeah.
If you want to study it from the mathematical equation, it'll be much easier because you can see that moment is directly proportional to the distance. So the more you increase the distance, the higher the moment will be in that particular direction.
Yeah, okay, yeah, it's, it's a directly proportional, hence should be.
Alright, Panda, did you get it?
Instead of, yeah. Instead of moving X closer towards the pivot, we can also move Y away from the pivot. So that could also be the correct answer.
Alright, I think we're done here?
Yeah.
Uh huh, okay. Question number 9. Wait, I think we have a question.
Wait. Okay, if you want, I can explain it to him in the chat. Okay, fine, or you can just explain it again to him anyhow, it's fine.
Okay, so you're asking how it is B? Moving X towards the pivot. Look at the position of the small mass. The way it is being held there, it is supporting the anti-clockwise moment, right? So if we move X towards the pivot, that will be supporting the clockwise moment. So they will be balanced again. Because to balance a beam, what you need to do is make the anti-clockwise and the clockwise moment to be equal. So if one moment is being increased. Alright, I think we're done here?
Yep, we can move on.
Okay, question number 9. A resultant force of 2 Newton acts on an object of mass 3 kg for 6 seconds. What is the change in velocity of the object? Okay, we can just use a simple F equals to M-A equation here. Force is equal to mass into change in velocity divided by time. Okay, and here, our V minus U will be the final answer. So we can just write that as change in velocity. And force will divide by mass, so 2 divided by 3. And we're going to multiply that with the time given, so it's gonna be 6. And in the end, the final answer is going to be 4. Which is the change in velocity. So the answer is C.
Okay, did you guys understand?
Checking the chat for any questions or you can just simply raise your hand?
Uh, okay, someone is typing, but I'm not. Okay, I guess we can move on, yeah.
Alright, we'll just keep an eye on the chat in case there is any question. Okay.
Yeah.
Question number 10. The diagram shows the energy stores for a mobile cellphone and how the energy is transferred between the stores. What describes how the chemical energy gets transferred? Electrical work done? Mechanical work done? Electromagnetic waves or sound waves? Alright, so I feel like this question is quite obvious what the answer will be. It will be electrical work done. Because in order for the next 2 steps to occur, which is internal energy and kinetic energy, is going to be electrical work done. Oh, the initial velocity? Alright, we didn't do anything to it, we just named it. V minus U can also be represented with this symbol, which is like, let me show you clearly, triangle V, which shows the change in V. So V minus U is change in V. Okay. Let me just open the paper again and we can move on to the next question if these are clear? Okay. Question number 11. A wind turbine is 30% efficient and has an output of 2.5 megawatt of electrical power. What is the power input to the turbine? Okay, this is quite simple. So we can just use the formula, efficiency is equal to input power, which are we representing by P of I divided by, sorry, output power divided by input power. So it's going to be 30% is equal to X over 2.5 megawatt. Alright, and the answer we'll get after doing this calculation is going to be B, 8.3 megawatt. Let me know in the chat if that's clear?
Yeah, so to add on, it'll just be, the input power should obviously be higher and, and 30% of the input power is equal to 2.5, hence it should be, uh, 2.5 divided by 0.3, which will be 8.3 recurring. It's the same thing.
Okay, you can either use 30% or you can do input power divided by output power, multiply by 100. It can be on either sides of the equation, you know?
Yep, exactly.
Okay, I think we can move on now. Question number 12. Which two physical quantities must be used to calculate the power developed by a student running up a flight of stairs? Okay, first of all, let's just write down the formula of power. Power is equal to work done over time. Okay, so if we don't have the time given, so we can just cross this out. Uh, in the second one, force exerted and the time taken only. What is work done? Work done is the force and the distance in which the force is applied. So we don't have the distance over here. Work done and the vertical height, no time here as well. So see, if this way, it's easier to solve, answer your questions if you can like cancel out the other options. So you're confirmed about your answer.
Yeah, you basically eliminate all the wrong choices and you'll be left out with the right one.
Okay, question number 13. Oh, let me just check the chat if there are any questions?
No.
Okay, great. Question number 13. The density of sea water is 1,030 kilogram per meter cube. The gravitational field strength on the earth is 9.8 Newton per kg. Atmospheric pressure is 101,000 Pascal. A wish depth in sea water is the total pressure due to the atmosphere and the water equal to 513,000 Pascal. Alright, so this is quite a simple question. We can write this in the form of liquid pressure, where liquid pressure is equal to rho G H. Where rho is equal to 1,030, G is equal to 9.8, and we're going to write H in the form of X. So we can do, and for P, this is a very important part. For P in this formula, P just represents the liquid pressure, not the total pressure exerted. So we're going to subtract this value from this value. So it's going to give us 412,000. And in the end, if we solve for X, our answer is going to be 40.8 meter. Alright, is that clear? Yes, we're trying to find the height because it says, um, at what depth? This is not really the height, you can call it depth, H is the depth really. And luckily for us, our syllabus has removed the manometer and barometer, so we don't have to worry about that.
Wait, what?
Yeah.
You removed it? I started that all.
Yes, luckily we're rid of all the calculations there.
That's new information for me.
Okay, let's move on. Question number 14. 4 students describe the phrase absolute zero during a lesson on the particle model. Which student is correct? This is the lowest possible temperature. I agree with student A. Wondering if you guys do? So let's just cancel out the other options. Particles in a solid start vibrating. No, that's absolutely incorrect. Particles do not have any weight, that's not possible. Particles have the least gravitational potential energy. No, because the movement of the particles inside a substance or a material is based on the kinetic energy, not the potential energy. So our answer is A.
I don't think any question.
And for the barometer and manometer, that is removed, starting from 2023, I guess. Okay, question number 15. 4 students are asked to state and explain the relative magnitudes of thermal expansion of solids and gases. Which student is correct? Alright, gases expand more than solids because the molecules in a gas are in random motion. No, that's incorrect. Gases expand. I mean, that is one of the reasons, that can be the most accurate reasons. Gases expand more than solids because the attractive forces. Now this is correct. The attractive forces between molecules are much weaker. This is the key word that we're looking for. So it's gonna be B, let's just cancel out the others. Solids expand more than gases, we already know it's wrong. Solids, yep. Alright. 4 cups. Question number 16. 4 cups, A, B, C, and D contain hot coffee. Which cup keeps the coffee warm the longest? Okay, in this case, we're gonna do, the outside surface of the cup is, can be either black or white. So let's just cut out those options, it's going to be white because white is a good reflector of thermal waves and black absorbs it. So white will allow it to stay warm. It will allow the substance inside the container to stay warm. So we can cancel out these options. And as for the top of the cup, the heat or thermal waves, you can say, may escape through radiation conversion, so we need a lid. So the answer is gonna be C. Uh, are we clear here?
Oh yeah, okay, black is also a good emitter, so it'll also emit heat, which will make the liquid cold. Black is a good absorber and a good emitter. That's why it's, it's not black.
And if you're talking about the absorption, it will absorb the heat from the liquid to get the heat for itself. It's a very selfish person. It won't be getting the heat from outside for the liquid. It will be taking the heat from the liquid for itself.
Yeah.
Yes, it's on the outside. White is very selfless.
Through this, okay, yeah, okay, let's move.
Alright. Question number 17. The diagram shows a wave. What are the amplitude and wavelength of this wave? Okay, first let's work on the amplitude. If you can see here, let me just zoom in. The amplitude is the height or the depth of the truss or the trough. Trough or crest. Okay, so it's going to be either this or this. They both are gonna be the same height, as we can see that this is total 6 centimeter and this is 3, so this will also be 3. So the amplitude will be 3 centimeter. And as for the wavelength, the easiest way to remember the wavelength is it should either start here and end at the corresponding point of the same one. Like trough to trough or crest to crest. So in this case, it will be 3 and 8. And if we scroll down, that is answer B. Is that one clear? No, wavelength is either crest crest to crest or trough to trough. It isn't from crest to trough or trough to crest. Alright. As for the next one, eighteen, optical fibers are used to transmit digital signals using infrared radiation. The average refractive index of the fibers is one point five. Which road describes additional signal and give the speed of infrared radiation in the fibers? Okay, first of all, let's cut off the ones that aren't possible. So we can say that in the speed, we can see that this isn't possible. Because it would be higher than the speed of light. So it's either this one. Or this one. Because they're less, the speed is less than the speed of light. Okay, digital signal, and that is correct, a signal that consists of only two values. So it's gonna be A. Alright, is that clear? Oh, Lillian, six centimeter, six centimeter, isn't really anything. It's just double the vague, double the amplitude. Okay, guess we'll move on to the next question now. Question number nineteen. Which statement describes monochromatic light? Alright, mono, the word means one. So we can say monochromatic, a light consisting of one color. Also one color meaning one type of frequency. So it's gonna be A, which says a light of a single frequency. I think that's gonna be clear because it was a very simple concept. Yeah, I think it is. No questions in the chat? Okay, question number twenty. A beam of light consists of yellow and blue light. The beam is light, the beam of light is incident on a glass prism. Which diagram is correct? Alright, first, the best way to do this is to draw the diagram by yourself first. So let's just do that. We're going to make a triangle here. Okay, okay. So it is incident on the triangle in this direction, sort of. And at this point. If we see the normal is perpendicular, so like a square in case where the normal would have been like this. It is not gonna be like that, it's gonna be somewhere. Here. Alright. No, that's a bit too ugly, let me just do that again. Okay, so what you have to do is just make it like sort of perpendicular to the line. Like as if a straight line coming out of the triangles. So, okay, and as it is going from a less dense area to a more dense area, it will refract towards the normal. So we can assume. One ray to be like this. And the other way to go somewhere like this. And after that, they will be moving away from the normal. So in the end, it's gonna be like this. And this. Alright, now what is the key to remembering which color will be above and which color will be lower? So I think we all have learned the Vibh cure or the Royg-Biv distribution of the visible light. So in this case, it will be Royg-Biv from up to down, so it's gonna be. R O Y. G. B I V. And as we are considering only two colors, which are blue and yellow. What we're going to do is, yellow is clearly going to be above blue. So the answer for question number twenty is gonna be D. Alright, any questions?
We have some questions.
Alright, first of all, I'm going to tell you about the normal. The normal has to be perpendicular to the base. Like, let me draw a more simpler figure and show it to you. Like, if this is the base. And a light ray is coming like this. The normal is going to be perpendicular to the surface. Like, if I zoom in a bit. I can show you. Approximately, this is going to be the normal. Like, it should be at ninety degree angle. But for these type of questions, you don't need to draw it like that precisely, you just need to have an estimate of the direction. Alright.
Yeah, just know the diagram.
But why not A? Okay, let me tell you why it is not A. Okay, so for A, you can see it is refracting at the wrong angle, it's diffracting in the wrong uh position. Because in A, it's showing to be refracted away from the normal. But as it is going from a a less dense to a more dense material, it's going to refract towards the normal. Alright. Okay. Question number twenty-one. A radio station broadcasts a signal with a frequency of eighty-nine megahertz. What is the wavelength of this signal? Okay, so this is quite a simple question. We're gonna do V equal to F lambda. Where V is equal to the speed of light, so three times ten to the power of eight. And F is equal to eighty-nine. Times ten to the power of six. And we're going to take lambda, which is the wavelength as X. Alright, now we're just gonna divide the speed of light by the frequency. And the final answer that we're going to get for twenty-one is going to be B. Three point four.
Okay, someone asked why ten to the power of six?
Alright, whenever it says mega or like capital M, that means mega. So for to find the actual value, the like non-standard form value, we get. That number times ten to the power of six. So it's going to be actually eighty-nine multiplied by ten to the power of six, which is eighty-nine million. So mega is really just the physics term for million. Alright, I think this one's clear. Question number twenty-two. A boy shouts and hears the echo from a tall building two point two seconds later. The speed of sound in air is three hundred thirty meter per second. Alright, first we're gonna make a visual representation of this question. So, okay, here's our boy. Our boy is standing here. And apparently he is not very happy because he is shouting. And here is our building. The distance we need to find between the boy. And the building. And what is the information that we have? The information we have is that when he shouted, he heard his echo. After it bounced off from the building two point two seconds later. While the speed of sound in the air was three hundred thirty meter per second. So. What we can do here is use a simple, speed is equal to distance over time equation. So as speed is equal to distance over time. Distance is equal to speed into time. But. The. Echo came back after bouncing off from the wall, so first it went there. Then it came back. Alright. So if you can see this. You can tell that the distance that we're gonna get is going to be twice the distance that was traveled. So we can do, if distance is equal to speed into time. Three hundred thirty. Times two point two. And then we have to divide it by two. So that is going to be equal to three hundred sixty-three meters. And the closest value is C. Is that one clear? The speed of sound, that is not a fixed value, alright? So sometimes they can give it uh three hundred, three thirty, or sometimes they can tell, they can give you other factors and they can ask you to calculate it. So it's going to usually be between three hundred to three hundred sixty meter per second. It is not a fixed value. Uh yes, Darla, we can also do that, two point two divided by two, you're gonna get the same answer. Alright. Alright, Nataish, you can carry it from here.
Yeah, so for twenty-third question, a magnetic field of a magnet can be represented by magnetic field lines. Which in diagram shows the two magnetic field lines correctly? So we have to, so to always remember it, the field lines always flow from north to south. So it starts at north and then goes to. And. The arrow marks are important. Yep. Hence, it should be A because it's going away from north and towards. Yeah, exactly. So did everyone understand? And in the, in the paper four, they might ask us to draw the field lines. And then we have to make sure we include the, the arrow mark. Can you always hear me?
I can hear you, but there is someone that's saying they can't hear me. Um, can you hear me in isolation? Oh. Alright, I guess there uh there must be a problem on their end.
Yeah, 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 okay, fine, let's continue. So, uh twenty-fourth question. A plastic rod is rubbed with a dry cloth, the rod becomes. Positively charged, why has the rod become positively charged? So. The positive charges do not move, it's only the negative ones or electrons in this case. So it has lost electrons. Only then, yeah, just logic. E- even in chemistry, uh it's only the electrons which are lost. Okay, fine, next question, twenty-first. Uh, which statement about that? Okay, I guess your stream is fast, I think.
Um, can you see it now?
Yep.
Alright, question number twenty-five.
Yeah, yeah, uh question number twenty-five, which statement about a, about electric current in a conductor is correct? So. In a DC circuit, electric current gradually decreases along the conducted, no, it's false. And. In a DC circuit, three electrons move back and forth, nope, it's not back and forth, it's in a straight. And then in an AC circuit, uh current remains exactly the same, no, it's a varying current. Hence, it's D.
And the, I think another thing to be added for C is that you can explain it really easily. Because they say exactly the same, and it never says stays exactly the same because the direction is changing.
Yeah, yeah, it's always varying, yeah, exactly. Also that. Okay, fine, uh you can do the twenty-sixth.
Sorry? Oh, alright, thank you.
You can do it, yes.
Okay, so question number twenty-six. A piece of metal wire X with a uniform diameter has resistance R. A second piece of wire Y is made of the same metal and has a uniform diameter. Alright, first let's write down the mathematical equation for resistance R, which is this one. So R is equal to length over area, we know this connection. That in this connection, we can tell that the resistance is directly proportional to the length. And the resistance is inversely proportional to its area. So let's see what the next statement is. Y has double the cross-sectional area of X. Double cross-sectional area, alright, if we multiply A by two. R will be divided by two. Okay, and half the length of X. And if L has been divided by two, Y R will also be divided by two. So the final answer will be R over four. Let me know if this was a bit confusing, because I think I did it a bit quickly. Uh yes, I can explain it again. Alright, just look over here, okay? We have area and length, and we know the relationship of both of them with R. When length increases, so does area, and when length decreases, so does radius, alright? So if we divided the length by two, the resistance will also be divided by two, which is here, we're showing that here. And if the area is doubled, it is inversely proportional, so if the area is doubled, the resistance will be halved. So we're going to do it again. So two multiplied by two, which are both in the denominator, are going to be multiplied, so the answer is going to be R over four.
Okay, so the twenty.
Right, they got it.
Okay, fine, moving on to the twenty-seven. An electric. What?
It says the formula for R is equal to L over A. Alright, when we're actually using this formula, the formula is going to be resistance is equal to row times L over A, where row is constant. But in this case, for both of the wires, they said that we have the same type of wire. So we didn't feel the need to add the row, which is the density or the nature of the material.
Is there a, a, a typo on the twenty-seventh?
Um, an electric fire is connected to, no, I don't think so.
Oh, okay, okay, fine, yeah. Okay, so an electric fire is connected to a, to forty volt supply and transfers energy at rate of one. Energy at a rate of one kilowatt, so how, how much charge passes to the. Fire in one heart? So first of all, uh the formula I is equal to Q by T is, is needed because they asked us to find the charge. So, but they haven't given the current, so that's the thing. But the, so kilowatt is the unit of power, so power is equal to voltage into, yeah, V I or I V. So because of that, one thousand kilowatts is equal to the voltage into I. And then we can find out the power which is uh hundred and twenty, yeah. Wait, no, I did differently, okay. Yeah.
Alright, so four point one six seven will be our current.
Four point one six of four point one six recurring and then. And then I is equal to Q by T and so Q is equal to I T, so this into time. Which is, it's, it's a bit three thousand six hundred. Uh so, which is fifteen thousand, which is C. One, one point five into ten power for given the standard form. So did you, wait, once again, did you understand or do I have to repeat it? Okay, I guess everyone understood. Moving on to the next question. Twenty eight. Two lamps are connected in island, which switches must be closed so that both lamps are lit. Uh, yeah, in here it should be, i- it's pretty obvious it's B, it's, it's all a tree. Only then, I mean, if, if they're asked, yeah, i- if, if it asks like. One of the lamps, the one connected only in series should, you know, light, then it can be only one and two. But because, uh you know, both the lamps must light, it should be all three, uh it's pretty obvious. Pretty easy question, three marks, okay, did everyone understand? Okay, no questions.
Um if you have any question, instead of taking your time to writing it down, you can just raise your hand.
Yeah, you can also raise your hand and we can make you a speaker and you can ask it.
All understood.
Um moving on to the twenty ninth question.
Okay.
Yep, uh change in, okay, yeah. The diagram shows a circuit that switches on a lamp and there's a change in environment. It's change in environment causes the lamp to be switched on. So. So a decrease in light intensity. Okay, no, okay, so in here, it's. Yeah, it's thermistor, so hence light has, has nothing to do with it. Uh, uh and a decrease in temperature would, you know, decrease the current, so it won't be that, so light, no, so it's not B, so it's D. And yeah, I just so you know, uh people often. Get confused between a thermistor and a variable resistor, so you have to keep that in mind. Because they would, both look quite similar. What, yeah, right, that's the formula. Okay, so thirty eighth, uh step down transformer is hundred percent efficient. It has an input power of two hundred and forty volts in alternating current and then output voltage of sixty volts. Okay, so hundred percent efficient means that the input power is equal to the output power. So. Current in the, in the primary coil is equal to point five. So the secondary coil, it will be, uh. Yeah, it's just be. Okay, it'll be two forty into, into point five is equal to. No, we can just use I P is equal to I S. Yeah, okay, same thing, we, we can just do a, a two forty into, into point five. Is equal to sixty X and then we can find the answer. And if we do the calculations correctly, it'll be C, which is two amperes. Okay, did everyone, oh wait, once again, there's someone who has a doubt. So let me invite them to speak. And Daisy, hello.
Hello.
You're a speaker now, yeah?
Yeah.
Uh.
Uh. Hello.
Yeah, yeah, we can hear you, so.
Okay, I. I have a question for the previous, uh number two guy, I think, gone on the tennis.
Twenty nine, this one can you scroll down? Wait, is it the thirtieth or twenty nine? Which question? Okay, okay, twenty nine.
Yes.
Yeah?
So if, if the thermistor. The relationship is, uh we need to compare the.
Uh your, your voice is actually m- muffled, it's not clear, could you? Be louder.
Um yeah, I think I get what you're trying to say. Um you wrote out in the chat, so high temperature is equal to low resistance, yes, that's correct.
What?
Yeah, but.
Then.
Okay. Oh, okay, yeah, I get it. Okay, so it's the, it's the surrounding temperature, y- yes, right, ha, uh yeah. Yeah, but how the, the, what, um, Mr. Functions is that when there's a high temperature. It decreases the resistance, which increases the current, which causes the lamp to be switched on and it should be D.
If it's a, if it's not a thermistor, alright, let me explain to you the effect of resistivity, alright? Temperature, if we're consisti- uh considering an ohmic conductor. In that case, as the temperature is increased, the vibrations in the particle, the parti- uh particle vibrations increase, alright? So the resistance increases as well. So because it will be difficult for the charge to pass through, so the resistance increases. But in the case of a thermistor, which is going to be a semiconductor. What happens is that the effect that the vibrations have. Is less than the effect of the electrons that are released due to the adding of, due to the increase in temperature. Alright, in a thermistor, in a semiconductor, you can say that when the temperature is increased, electrons are released. Electrons are charges in this case, so more charges, more current, so less resistivity, less resistance.
Okay, so just to confirm. If it's a regular, um, regular, I don't know, resistor.
Yeah.
If you in, the pressure. The current will increase?
Yes, yes, in thermistor, the current will increase. So resistance, which is inversely proportional to current, will decrease. Current increases, resistance decreases.
The, the resistance decreases, which decreases the current, but because it's a thermistor, it works differently.
Oh, thank you.
Okay.
Uh to understand, this question is better to consider it as a far, fire alarm one. So when the temperature increases, the resistivity, resistance decreases. So it allows more current to.
Yep.
Alright, I'm just gonna move on to the next question.
Yeah, which is thirty first?
Yes.
On this one. Yes, so it's actually, okay, so the diagram shows the pattern of the magnetic field. Due to the current I in a straight wire, which show is correct. So this question is actually hard to understand unless you visualize it. So, uh, you have to use the Fleming's left hand rule. Right, oh, oh yeah, right hand, sorry, 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 uh. Mistake, yeah, yeah, you have to use the Fleming's right hand rule, so the current is moving downwards. Okay, do you all know how the right handle works, the Fleming's right handle?
Alright, for the right hand rule, you could just consider a thumbs up or a thumbs down. If the current is upwards, you can make a thumbs up and if the current is downwards, you can make a thumbs down. And in the direction that your fingers are coiling in, that will be the direction.
Yep, so, so because of that, it moves towards. Y and as to whether, um, the relative strength of field. I mean, we know that it's, it's greater when it's closer, so hence it should be Q, like, like for example, even in, in, in a normal magnet. The closer we are to the magnet, uh the stronger the magnetic field is. Hence, it's, hence, uh Q is created. Created and P and, and the direction of field should be towards Y, hence it should be D.
Um Lilian, for this chapter, we only need to know this, I think as far as this we need to know, that semiconductors are non-omic. Because their resistance decreases with the increase in temperature.
Yeah.
I hope that's clear.
But not like they're actually gonna ask that, um, semiconductors, i- it's a thing, right? But we do have to know what it is.
Alright, we can move on to the next question. Question number thirty two.
Question number thirty two, in which device is the magnetic effect of a current not used? So electromagnet, it is used such as, suggested by its name. Loudspeaker is als- also used, so a, so a potential divider is, it's any device. The, the definition is that it's any device which splits current, so basically like res- resistors basically. So hence, uh. Yeah, hence it has nothing to do with the magnetic effect. Hence, it's potential divider.
Alright, if this question is clear, we can move on.
Okay, and no questions, we can move on, um, yeah.
Okay, question number thirty three.
Question number thirty, okay, we have come to nuclear physics, so fission and fusion are two types of nuclear process. Uh, how does the total mass of the nuclei produced? Compared with the total mass of the original nuclei or nuclei in these nuclear processes? So it's total mass of fission, uh you know, products compared to original nuclei and its fusion. So the thing is. We think that, uh like, m- many people will make the mistake and write it as B. For this one, but the actual answer, the, yeah, or, or A, because they may consider the law of. Mass conservation theory, but it's actually D, both decrease. So, so it, it, it's actually very easy to go wrong in this question, but it's easy. Both will decrease, the, the mass of the products will be less compared to the mass of the reactants. Regardless of whether it is fission or fusion.
Alright, is this one clear?
Wait, 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 someone is asking it to explain. Yeah, okay, okay, I'll explain, eh, okay, fine, it's, uh, sorry, I went AFK. So, it's basically that, uh, when nuclear fusion or fission happens. Usually neutrons are given out because it's when like, I mean, basically, okay, let's talk about. Fission, a neutron is released and even infusion, uh neutrons are released, hence. Should be less. Uh, they call that, i- in fission especially, there's something called as the chain reaction in which, uh. Wh- when one neutron collides with an unstable. Atom, it undergoes nuclear fission and it releases a neutron which goes and collides with another unstable particle. Yeah.
Or you could consider this as a, uh if you take chemistry, uh I think, I see there's a real time, just give me a minute and we'll come back to you. Okay, so if we see them both in terms of chemistry, you know about bond breaking and bond forming. So it's sort of like, keep that in mind and when fission, fission is the breaking up of a single nuclei into two separate, right? But they take in a lot of energy while doing that, so that energy is converted into mass. So that mass is therefore less in the end, because a lot of energy is given out. And as for the total mass of fusion products compared to original nuclei. Where two different smaller nuclei are combined together to form a bigger one, the mass is still less. And that is why, that is because the mass, the energy is given out. So the total mass will be less than them both separately, as well as them combined. Consider this as energy rather than neutrons.
Hmm, yep, okay, what you say, that makes sense.
Alright, there was someone who raised their hand?
No, there's not a question.
Oh, I think they got it.
Oppenheimer reference, okay, okay, fine, yeah, let's move on to the thirty fourth question.
Okay, let me just scroll down.
The table shows the composition of three different nuclei, so X, Y and Z. So which nu- nuclei or isotopes are the same element? Okay, so i- isotopes are the same element, so. The definition of isotope is that they contain the same proton number but different mass numbers slash neutron number, they, they're the same thing. So, uh, yeah, so three and three. And four, okay, X and Z, I mean, it can't be Z because Z contains a different proton number compared to X and Y. So it should be only X and Y, which is B. Because they contain the same number of protons, but they contain different number of neutrons and hence that's the. Little definition of an isotope. It's obvious, it's B. So is this clear with everyone? Explain it again, okay, so. Uh, the definition of an isotope is that they are, uh, atoms of the same. Um, yeah, okay, no, they're elements with the same proton number, but different mass numbers slash neutron number. So nuclei mean element. E- I mean, isotopes are the same element, so basically Z contains four protons. But then, uh, if they're isotopes, isotopes contain the same proton number, hence, hence it cannot be X and Z or Y and Z. And, and, and. And, uh, of course, the thing, if he has then they are the same element, they are not isotopes at all. H- hence it should be X and Y only, which is B.
Alright, I think that is clear, I don't see any questions in the chat.
Okay, fine, yep, next question, the thirty fifth question.
Okay, can you scroll down?
Yeah, which change occurs in the nucleus of a radioactive atom during B time mission? So during the B time mission, uh, uh, an electron. Is released, so hence it will be. A, because I, a neutron will transform to a proton or an electron. Or, or it can be, uh, a positron, but that's not enough potions anyways, yeah, so. Okay, this is straightforward, yeah, next question, I don't think we have to look at the chat. Thirty sixth, okay. Radioactive isotope has a, has a half-life of eight days. A detector close to a sample of this isotope gives out a count rate of two hundred counts per minute. Without the source, the count is twenty counts per minute, so what is the count rate due to the source after eight days? Okay, so the, the twenties CPS is the background count rate, yeah. So the initial two, two hundred also contains the background count rate. Yep, yeah, so we have to subtract it to get the, to get the count rate of the, of the radioactive. Isotope alone, which is, which is one eighty and one eighty by two is. Yeah, straightforward. So always in, in these type of questions, you, you have to subtract the. The background count rate minus the total count rate because. The detector, it also measures the count rate of the radioactive isotope plus the background count rate. So that's one thing to make clear. Why divide by two, it's because half-life is eight days and, uh, half-life is the amount of time taken for the. Yeah, amount of the, uh, time taken for the substance to like reduce by half, hence it's by two, it's only one half-life. Ah, okay, 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 fine, so is everyone clear? Yeah, okay, everyone is, okay, so thirty seventh question. So which statement about, about the solar system is correct? All the planets are rocky, no, uh, they are gas giants of course and only the earth has a moon, no. Many other planets has a moon and, uh, C, Pluto is a dwarf planet, yes. Pluto is currently considered as a dwarf planet, there are many stars in the solar system, no, there is only one star which is the sun. Okay, okay, fine, yeah, yeah, indeed, this is actually a easy chapter except. Okay, fine, so next question, thirty eighth. Okay, comets are bodies which orbit the sun in the solar system. What's the shape of the orbit and how the sun is positioned within the orbit? Okay, so many people make mistakes in this and, uh, no, it is not C. It is D, let me explain why, it's because, uh. I mean, of course, all our orbits are elliptical, but it is not the center of the orbit. It will, it will be better if you, if you could actually draw the diagram, explain. This ma, so, and I can explain the, the energy behind that. I mean, why is it, okay, so, so comets are, are made of destine ice. And comets do not have its own gravitational field of its own, I mean, like it doesn't have a strong gravitational. Field, so you might think that why is it not, you know, colliding with the sun or with the star if. Because, uh, by logic, shouldn't the sun just attracted towards the. I mean, the, the comet towards itself and, and, yeah, you know, collide with it. But the thing is that because it's elliptical, when it, uh, I mean, no, it's not at the center, it's actually. Uh, how the, on one end it's closer and on the other end it's, it's farther. So when it comes closer to the earth, more of potential energy is converted in, into kinetic energy. It's called as the centripetal force and it's not there for us, uh, so, so that increases. And, and that causes the comet to move faster as it comes closer with the. As it comes closer, uh, you know, uh, to the sun, so. So that speed allows it to, you know, escape the, escape the gravitational. Field of the sun and not collide with it, so it's the speed basically. Increase in speed, the potential energy is converted in, in, into kinetic energy and when it's farther away from the sun. Uh, the, the kinetic energy is less and the potential energy is low, so it's moving slowly. To be better with the diagram explanation.
Yeah, I'm just opening it, let me just turn off this stream, streaming. And I'll just open the diagram, I found an image that can really well explain how the positioning is done and the shape of the orbit. Alright, Nitesh, can you see the screen?
Yeah, one second, it's loading, yeah, I can see, okay, so when it's closer to the, to the sun, so the sun is the yellow dot. Uh, yeah, so when it's closer to the sun, the kinetic energy is higher. As it, as the comet approaches closer, the kinetic, the gravitational potential energy is lost and the kinetic energy is gained. Uh, we all know that the laws of gravitational potential energy is the gain in kinetic energy. So that speed allows it to escape the, escape the orbit of the sun and not collide with it. Also, another thing to make in mind is, we like, uh, on earth, we see comets when it's closer to the sun. And because it's closer to the sun, uh, like, you know, the ice melts off giving the comet's tail. That's why, you know, we cannot see the tail always because when it's farther away, when it's on the other side, uh. It's only ice, it's like solid and there's no aid and hence, uh. Answer is. Okay, did everyone understand?
I think, uh, most of them understood, I don't see any questions.
Yeah, no questions, okay, fine, this ma, you can present the.
Alright.
Okay, uh, thirty nine question, which nuclear reaction produces the release of energy? To power the star, so for this one, nuclear fission of helium to hydrogen. No, that's our nuclear fission, fission, it's fusion and, uh, yeah, so let's, all the fissions are A and B are wrong. Uh, so it's nuclear fusion from helium to hydrogen, no, it's actually from hydrogen to helium. Uh, hence, it is D. So, next question. Okay, what is the definition of the Hubble constant? Yeah, this basically, it, it just three marks, it's the ratio of the speed. At which the galaxy is receding from the earth to the distance, yeah, from earth, so it's like the red shift. We call that, it's caused due to the expansion of the universe. Yeah, so this is the definition, okay. So, did everyone understand?
Alright, I think we're done with this paper.
Yeah.
If there are any questions, please write them down in the, and we will be answering them.
After four, could you please tell what chapter four, I do not follow the textbook clearly.
I think they mean block four, which is electricity.
Wait, oh, oh, okay, electricity, yeah, okay, actually, you know, comparatively, that is indeed like harder. Uh, like, uh, okay, so the main concept, you know, students find hard electricity. A- and magnetism that block and, and also it's easy, easier to mess up the, the half-life questions. And also the scale drawing questions on paper four, so for electricity and magnetism really. Uh, you, you just have to know the, you, you have to be, you know, thorough with the formulas. And you, and a, a lot of the times you have to like visualize and stuff because. The questions can be tricky, like they can include some small details which can change the entire way how the question works. Like, for example, the, the resistors, whether it's connected in the parallel or series and, and many other things. Uh, uh, you, you have to know the, you have to know all the formulas. Uh, can we ask? Any questions from any topic? Physics, of course. And we'll try to answer them. Use Z node, so it saves my exams. Okay, okay, so how do you know the formula to use? Okay, refractive index is basically one by sine C, uh. That's one of the formulas and, and the one thing to make sure is that the, the C is the angle and it's the angle from the normal. Rate I can.
Yes?
Someone's asking you to go over the ray diagram laws. Then what, oh, spring constant, yeah, right, wait, I, I'll explain it once. He's done or? Yeah, so you, you're aware of the formula physically K X, right? Uh, that's, that's it actually. They'll be, actually for the string constant questions, they'll be given the graph and, and they'll ask us to find the extension and stuff. So, yeah, Hooke's law, exactly, Hooke's law. Okay, so any other questions? Or that.
Alright, for the ray diagram laws, okay, just to go over it quickly, uh, okay. There's just, I think, three main rules. Uh, the firstly is that the ray parallel to the principal axis will go through the focus. Wait, let me open a diagram and I'll show it to you more clearly. Oh yeah, I found a really good diagram, let me just open this. Don't worry, we're not ignoring you. At least we're trying not. Hey, um, Nitesh, please let me know if you can see my screen.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Uh, Navi, can you see my screen?
Everyone should, I guess.
Yeah, alright, she can see it. Okay, so if you see over here, the ray pa- the rule number one is the ray parallel to the principal axis. The principal axis is this line, the black line you can see here, the ray that is entering while being parallel to it. At the optics, at the center, at O point, is going to turn. And in such an angle that it passes through the focus, to the focal point, which is called. Alright, and then let's see if we can get rule number two. Alright, rule number two is ray passing through depends, focus will become parallel. Alright, uh, vice versa, like if we flip this first diagram around. If it is passing from the F first, it will become later parallel to the, um, principal axis. And as for the third rule, ray passing through the optical center will emerge without deviation. Like this one, we can see in this picture over here. If there's a ray that is going straight through the optic, optical center. It won't change direction in anyways, these are the only three rules. Is that alright?
Oh yeah, and, and paper four, they'll ask us to draw the lens diagram, I think so, so.
Alright, this is great then.
Yep, any other questions?
Alright, I think this is enough for today, we've had a meeting for one hour and thirty two minutes.
Yeah, okay, fine, okay, so in our next session, we'll probably do paper four. Actually, yeah, uh, I actually worried out, uh. You know, a, a fold kind of thing where, you know, where we had to do paper two or paper four first and. Majorities chose paper four, but then we eventually didn't decide to do paper two because of. Two comes before four and, yeah, we wanted to go in order. And anyways, there will be, uh, more sessions happening for physics, so. I guess, we'll try our best to help you people get prepared for your November exam. All the best for everyone who is writing it. I guess we are done for today.
Alright, everyone, thank you so much for joining, we'll see you guys next time maybe, so, bye bye.